Special meeting with the Dickinson City Council to order. Item one, call to order and certification of quorum.
Councilmember Simpson is absent. Councilwoman Simpson?
Here.
Member Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Skipworth?
Here.
Councilmember Brantley?
Here.
Councilmember Schick?
Here.
Councilmember Linton?
Here.
Thank you. Move on to item two, the invocation, if you please rise. Councilman Brantley, would you please lead us?
Father God, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for each person in this room. We thank you for each person attending this meeting online. God, I thank you for this day. God, we thank you for bringing us here safely. Pray that you would guide over us, guide over our thoughts, guide over our decisions. God be with us through this entire meeting. In your son Jesus Christ, we pray and forsake. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with every teaching and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
All right. We are, we're going to move on to item four, announcements and presentations. Number four, announcements concerning items of community interest. No action will be taken or discussed. Councilmember comments regarding items of community interest in accordance with Texas Government Code, section 551.0415. Item four A, council comments. We'll begin with Councilwoman Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'd just like to give a couple of announcements. The Dickinson High School homecoming parade will take place on Wednesday, October 11th at 5:30 PM. We invite you to participate in a longstanding Gator tradition celebrating our Gator alumni and community members. The parade route will begin at Barbara Middle School and will finish at Dickinson High School. If you live along 517, please be aware of the brief closures as a result of the parade. Make sure to follow Dickinson ISD's website and social media for updates about the parade. Another great piece of news from Dickinson ISD, Dickinson ISD is thrilled to receive 1.1 million in grants from the Jobs and Education for Texas Grant Program through the Texas Workforce Commission. This funding will enable Dickinson High School to become the first high school in Texas offering an onsite radiology imaging program with state-of-the-art equipment, preparing students for lucrative careers in healthcare. Additionally, the well-doing program will receive new equipment and opportunities for project-based learning and competitions, promising career, making promising career prospects for graduates. These grants signify a commitment to transforming education in the district with a potential to set a precedent for technical education across the state. I'm extremely proud of Dickinson ISD and this new program. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Townsend.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Councilman Brantley.
Yep. Thanks for everybody's here in person. Thanks for everybody attending online. I don't have any major announcements today. Just this week, staff recognition. I would like to thank, she was here earlier, I don't see her now, but Fran, Ms. Fran Seegers, there you are. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for the hard work that you put in. Fran's an administrative assistant with the city. Thank you very much for your efforts and everything that you do. That's all I got. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Schick?
Thanks, everybody, for showing up. It's a, it's a very important council meeting, and I'm glad we have great attendance on there. Last week, I attended the Galveston County Emergency Management meeting with Derek Hunt and Councilwoman Jenna Simpson. Found it very interesting. Look forward to the next meeting that they have. Attended the annual M.I. Lewis Gala. It was the largest crowd ever, and we raised a whole bunch of money and were very, very happy about it. Also like to remind everybody that Dickinson High School plays Klein Oak High School Friday at 7:00 PM. We need to get out there and make some noise. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Linton?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out, everyone online. Number one, concerning the intersection I-45 at FM 517, I spoke with David Lozaro, Galveston County Area Engineer with TechDOT, received his status and explained the major issue, in my opinion, was related to the northwest corner of that intersection and the traffic congestion on the southbound Feta Road as you travel eastbound or westbound onto FM 517. There were some ideas exchanged about how to alleviate some of the traffic congestion. I tried to keep my engineer hat off. I'm not the subject matter expert, and he is supposed to draw up some options and get back to me in a few weeks. Also, the construction crew who is assigned to the I-45 FM 517 intersection is currently working just north at Dickinson Bayou and should be working again at the I-45 517 intersection site in a few weeks. I'll provide an update as soon as I hear from them. And also, I saw the update from Carolyn just before the meeting, and thanks for stealing my thunder, Carolyn. But anyway, it was good to hear that TechDOT is finally going to start working on that intersection. Hopefully, we'll have a solution pretty soon to the traffic on that northwest corner. Hurricane season, just a reminder, Atlantic hurricane season ends November 30th. The peak is September 10th on Sunday, and with the most activity occurring between mid-August and mid-October, the Atlantic Basin has been churning out tropical systems almost daily for the past few weeks. We've had 14 storms so far this year, 13 named, one subtropical, and with nine of them in the past 20 days, extrapolating that trend for the peak of Atlantic hurricane season results in a storm approximately, well, every 2.2, 2.22 days for the next month. Let's hope that's not the case. Please be prepared with water, food, medicine, important documents, and survival gear. Make a checklist of which samples can be found at cdc.gov or redcross.org. The drought, on August 29th, Galveston County and most of the surrounding areas went from D3 extreme drought to D4 exceptional drought, the worst level of drought. I checked the WCID number one website, and we are not under any water rationing notice, but let's be respectful of water, our most valuable resource. Please don't water your landscaping during the middle of the day in 100-degree heat, and the best time to do so is early in the morning. Just a suggestion. Two more things. Burn ban, Galveston County is still under a burn ban, and in the city of Dickinson, open burnings are allowable only with a permit from the fire marshal. And actually, two more things. One, 9/11. 9/11 was yesterday. I just wanted to say that my thoughts are with everybody who was impacted. That includes all of us. I remember I was onsite at Johnson Space Center when I was walking with my bowl of oatmeal, and I saw the first building and the smoke emanating from the first building, and then the second tower was hit shortly after. And we were on lockdown, F-16s were scrambled, and I believe probably just flying around JSC in Ellington. It was a very surreal day, but it just reminded me, in this current, very divisive environment that we have, moments like that remind me that we're all on the same team. So, just a reminder. Last two things, my typical science, science nerd input. Congratulations to NASA astronaut Frank Rubio, who yesterday surpassed the U.S. space endurance record of 355 days. He will be returning to Earth on September 27th. We have another flight launching this Friday with Soyuz 70, launching from Kazakhstan this Friday and docking with the ISS for about approximately four hours later. We wish them safe travels. And the last thing is the Osiris Rex mission. The Osiris Rex mission is a U.S. mission to collect a sample from an asteroid. We collected a sample from asteroid Benu on September 24, oh, I'm sorry, in October of 2020, and it will be landing on the 27th. It will be doing a flyby of Earth and dropping its parcel as it passes by the Earth, and that parcel will land in the desert in the southwest, approximately 35-square-mile area on a government range, military range, and the satellite will continue on its journey to another asteroid to collect more samples. So, for the fiscal conservatives in the crowd, we will be reusing this satellite to collect samples from two separate asteroids. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Move on to item 4B, the city manager update.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. Before I begin going over project statuses, I wanted to address something, you know, head-on. For those that, you know, follow social media and other things, you know, a topic came up in regard to a receipt, salt grass receipt, and I like to head that off at the pass and really, you know, hit it straight on. That receipt had a notation on it saying that there was, that I had met with a developer. That is incorrect. The mail was charged to my personal card. I had met the mayor, his wife, and his son. That notation was made in error because as I was sorting out my receipts, I was kind of at the deadline for getting all of my receipting in for the purchase card or any reimbursements. When those two stacks were put to the side, one of them unfortunately went into the wrong pile. Knowing that we had ICSC, notation was incorrect, as soon as I found out that that notation was incorrect, I corrected the mistake, submitted payment on September 4th to fix the issue there. Reason why I wanted to say it publicly in front of everybody is because I do want to own an error. I also want to say that I don't want to be a distraction to the great work that our staff is doing, and I will be working with Anna and Fran to make sure in the future, well in advance of the deadline before check runs are done, to ensure that their work is what we talk about rather than my procrastination. So, I do want to apologize for that. Part two, project statuses. Have some good news in regard to our Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Grant that dealt with the Nickelstone as well as Pin Oak Projects and the Westgum Bayou Drainage Improvements. We are closing out all three phases of that grant, so that we'll be, and right now Hewitt Zollers is finishing up the, is currently wrapping up the closeout procedures necessary for us to, to close the project and for us to file it away and call all three projects officially done in regard, as far as the federal government is concerned. Also wanted to bring up the Community Development Block Grant. Just wanted to remind everybody that we're currently in the 90% phase for the Hughes Road Project. We have easement acquisition, railroad permit acquisition, gas line coordination, and some final designs before we can fully commit the 90% forward to the, to the feds to get approval at the 90%. Also wanted to let everyone know that right now, you know, as you'll see a lot of work on 44, 45th Illinois, Caroline, as well as some drainage improvements, we are anticipating being finished with the project by the end of October. Very, very much looking forward to having all of that tidied up and cleaned up. We know that we've, you know, made a mess in those neighborhoods, but we also know there was work that desperately needed to be done. So, the construction is anticipated to be completed October of 23, and the goal is to have all of the closeout documents and everything done and for federal purposes by April of 2024. Lastly, just wanted to let everyone know that we are going to be, one of the big things is that I want to thank Chase as well as Attico and Councilmember Schick for kind of really coordinating on the Bayou Watershed Committee and trying to get some more full participation. I do believe that, I know that Chase has been working on coordinating with staffs kind of in the area to see if we can get, drum up some more participation. My expectation is over the next couple of months, he'll be reaching out to other jurisdictions, to continue reaching out to jurisdictions. We do have some pretty major regional projects that, that we may be able to collaborate on if we can get full participation of the watershed committee and getting some inter-locals involved, and then may be able to get more than just de-snagging, but you know, talking about getting the dredging done as well as some of the outfall maintenance as well. So, it's going to be very critical to keep working on building those relationships. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So, we're going, we have a, we have probably two agenda items that have the most attention tonight, so I'm going to, I'm going to change the agenda up just a bit to kind of get to those items first. We're going to, we're going to move a little bit out of order. We're going to go to item 8A next, and then we'll handle the action item afterwards, and then we'll have the, the action item over the item 6E afterwards. Yes, so we're going to go to item 8A for the moment. So, item 8A, consultation with attorney, section 551.071, Texas Government Code. Discussion with attorney regarding contemplated slash pending litigation and regarding matters protected by attorney-client privilege. So, we will adjourn into executive session at 7:18 PM.
Rick Kinvey from Executive Session eight thirty two and we will move on to the public comment section. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or engaging in vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act the city council may not deliberate. So we have some people that have signed up for So we have some people that have signed up for specific agenda items and we'll get to you when we get to that item. So we do have a few on general items. So we will start with Mr. Joe Wilburn.
My name is Joe Wilburn. Resided 1309 Forest Cove, Dickinson, Texas. And since this administration has taken, this administration has taken the wheel, more than 70 employees have been terminated or forced to resign. The bulk of these people were not terminated for not showing up to work or drinking on the job or messing something up. The bulk of these people were let go because they have a different opinion from what the city leaders wanted them to have. If a person has a different opinion other than a top leader of Dickinson, they are malcontent. This comes straight from the writings of one of our leader's wives. Two hundred families were pushed out of their homes with very short notice during the holiday season over a faulty water heater. Think about this, folks. Two hundred families living in a place they can barely afford with little or no savings being forced to move. Some are saying they, the forced eviction was to gain more votes in the mayor's race or for the city to be able to buy the property at a reduced rate or both. About $180,000 of taxpayer money was laundered through a charitable foundation with an impeccable record of goodwill. This is another good name tarnished in the reporting of a story that will be told many times. This money was earmarked for the sole purpose of the relief of the residents of Creekside Apartments. Will this earmarked money put the city in the position of the landlord? Why did we step in offering relief instead of the landlord? Why will Osland, Osland not represent the, the city on the Creekside matter? Is there too much they know on the deal? How much property will be bought or condemned and taken off the tax rolls? Can anyone show where one sales tax dollar has been generated from our EDC since inception? Just $1? It looks like the only new sales tax dollars is being generated are from liquor sales consumed by the city manager paid for by our tax dollars. It's like hiding checks. Millions of dollars are being spent on consultants doing the same job the people are supposed to be doing. Who hired the consultants? When a person who enjoys power can destroy lives and affect changes in people's future remains unchecked, this is bound to happen. There are seven elected people to oversee a city manager. Six of those oversee the mayor. When you sell your integrity for a seat at the table, you then become part of the problem. So be prepared to accept the liability that comes with going along with the bad deeds. The two leaders have finally crossed the big dog in the room. Now let's see how much the taxpayers will have to spend to protect their egos. If you're looking for the people who created the drama, look no further than the seats next to you. I think it's time to
Your three minutes is up.
Recall the mayor and fire the city manager.
Next, we have Wayne Boltrifino.
Good evening. I intended to talk about the Creekside investigation, but I asked to go last for a reason. I didn't want to step in front of the residents of Dickinson. By the way, I live at 3743 Tartan in Houston, Texas, but I'm a resident of, of the state of Texas. Um, I just want to say one thing and then I want to let these folks talk. I think it is absolutely shameful that you went into executive session before these people had a chance to talk. These people have kids at home. They have things to do at night and I understand you do as well. But the disrespect you just showed this room full of people in the last hour, I think speaks volumes about what is wrong. I understand that leaders take arrows. I fire them. I understand that. But to do what you just did, I think says a lot about you folks. And you folks on council who are not part of the problem need to step up and start acting like people who actually care about the people in this room.
All right. Next, we have Joseph Lowery.
All right. I always chuckle when I hear these, uh, the openings on how, what you're limited to say. And so a lot of people don't understand how the First Amendment works. I will put the city on notice. I've been blocked from the social media page to be able to comment. That is a First Amendment right violation. I'm gonna put you on notice, fix it, or I'm gonna file a lawsuit. Second, all these people stayed back here for an hour and a half. I think that was completely inappropriate. I was hoping that maybe we could, uh, order pizza and just turn in the receipt as a developer or something. You know, when you have, when you have somebody making mistakes like that, that's a major problem when it comes to finances and taxpayers' money. So I'd also like to request a forensic audit of the city. And again, I like to practice safety and I'm going to behave myself tonight because it's a large bin over here. But if there's any drunk drivers or anything, I'd like to throw my name out there. I'd like to, you know, offer an Uber home so we have a safe community and that goes for anywhere in Galveston County. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Mr. Scott Schrader.
Scott Schrader, 3719 Kellner Road. I have several topics tonight. First, ordinance 9972022 was adopted last year and signed by Skipworth. All final board and commission interviews shall be held in an open public meeting with a posted agenda. Boards and members are encouraged to conduct preliminary interviews with prospective members. A letter of gratitude shall be sent electronically or through parcel delivery to each retiring member. Was this ordinance followed? Second, from the Texas Controller website, if the city's population of 20,000 or more, directors must reside within the city. How did this happen and why was a person still sent to Vegas who was not a legal board member? Third, from page 7879 of the HR policy, cost of alcoholic beverages are not allowable for reimbursement. It is the city's policy that expenditures of employees or council member spouses or other guests are not allowable. Has anyone been instructed just to turn in receipt instead of an anonymized receipt? The latest receipts I've seen caused me to have a lot of concerns. Fourth, from the city charter, I want to remind you that says failure of a member of the city council to maintain the residency requirement shall result in such office being automatically vacated. Fifth, related to the agenda tonight, we see Harden is on the agenda. Texas Monthly described Harden as the lawyer who people go to when they run afoul of the law. The public deserves answers to what is going on at Creekside and one has to wonder if everything was done legally or if this was a political move to help in an election. Finally, I've been following politics a long time. I sit on the original commission to draw up the city charter. In the last few years, I've, I've been personally been called a lot of names and I heard the terms disgruntled, clown, malice, malcontent, witch hunt, political theater, and beyond the pale. I heard a new one floating around recently, snake in the grass. Never in all my years following politics have I seen so many citizens thrown under the bus in the last few years. And I will reiterate, reiterate too, I think it was totally disrespectful to not allow the citizens to speak before y'all went to executive session. Thanks for your time.
All right. And next we have Tammy Steenbarger.
Hi, my name's Tammy Steenbarger, 5109 Costa Grande. I was gonna talk about that ordinance, but I had a chance to talk with the city attorney about that should be done, interviews in open session. And now it's been brought to my intention that it's the way you interpret interview. It's kind of like Kevin Costner's wife saying she doesn't understand what understand means when she signed the prenup. I mean, I think we all know what an interview is. Last night I attended the EDC meeting and y'all are changing the procurement policy, which half of our policies aren't even being, I mean, this is a joke. Y'all did this minus Schick and Townsend. Y'all adopted this. You worked on it. This should be followed. That's what we, they hired you for is to enforce the ordinances. Um, I, 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 now we're gonna, we are going to go for a procurement policy for the EDC that is gonna lessen the restrictions and not go with what the city of Dickinson and has never been a problem before, for the EDC before this administration? And I'm wondering on that 7A, so I left it open for interpretation because an EDC board member said that that policy procurement, he asked Cortland, did you, did you mean to put it into the EDC one? And he said, no. And so why is it in the councils? I mean, come on, man, we are tired. I mean, if we are malcontent, what's wrong with not being happy with the state of affairs? I mean, it's all of ours, you know? I think it's time, man, we gotta quit. We need to have that town hall. When y'all ran, y'all said we would have. I grew up here. You know what I mean? I grew up here. I mean, this is just gone. I mean, to make us sit out here for no reason at all and then half of y'all don't even, half of y'all don't even look at people when they're up here talking. It is disrespectful. You want to shake your head at me again tonight? Shake your head at me. But we do deserve a little bit, you know? Have I always done things right? No, man, but I've tried. But I mean, I'm tired of being an attorney. I'm not an attorney, you know what I mean? I'm not a city manager trying to interpret laws. It shouldn't be that hard to manage a city and be council and mayor. Just do the right thing. Thank you.
All right. And next we have John Parker.
My name is John Parker. I live here in Dickinson and I wanted to comment on some of the things about the receipt that city manager was talking about was this something back in April and then all of a sudden here on September the 5th, he corrected it and it's been like five months. It's not until it appeared and circulated out on the emails to Facebook and then all of a sudden we gonna get that corrected to sit there for five months like that. So it makes me wonder how many more receipts for somebody that do a budget, approximately $20 million, can you figure out a receipt for $250? You know, that's just, and that's our city manager. But, um, I don't know. And then, um, also I guess I have a problem with our city manager going out drinking a lot, a lot of nights consecutive, like four consecutive nights drinking till two o'clock in the morning. You know, so I, I don't know, you know, some of the mistakes is happening. Is it the alcohol or is it the city manager? What's going on? I don't know. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. And next we have Dawn King.
I'm gonna time myself too, because y'all know how I ramble, so. My name is Dawn King. I'm the president of the Dickinson Chamber of Commerce and our address is 1911 FM 517. I'm here tonight to give an update as we come to the last quarter of 2023. We're proud to say that this October will start our eighth year as the Dickinson Chamber of Commerce. We have 120 active members, 1,000 receive our bi-monthly newsletter and our community guide has become a valuable and respected tool to market both our business and our city. Our latest community contribution is a parklet on FM 517 currently under construction. Our certified farmer's market averages 228 visitors a month and incubates 18 Dickinson Cottage Industry businesses. As we began 2023, our goals were strong and hopeful, but now as we peer into 2024, the path isn't open and not very clear and we aren't sure it's safe. As it is with all chambers, our success is tied to the health of the community we serve. So we enlisted the help of, of business mentors and economic development specialists to help us interpret the impact of city activities as it pertains to the chamber. It resulted in a very unstable picture. Overall, it seems you don't feel accountable for your actions and the questionable actions are escalating. And I'm sorry to say that what happened earlier this evening, unfortunately, I think showed everybody that the results of what we had to help us, the people we had to help us, their observations were probably true. The newest sales tax information from the city, from the state comptroller's office, which came out yesterday, show that our sales are down by 46.18% from this time last year. We're projected to end the year by the comptroller at 39.18% below the 2022 numbers. You show slides of square, white squares and you promise development, but the truth is that no development is coming, but plenty of businesses are leaving. Millions of dollars of land have been purchased with no projects attached to them. Hundreds and thousands of dollars spent on projects that have never happened and never will happen. And now a multimillion dollar lawsuit looming over us. Accountability comes no matter how much you run from it. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have John Harris.
John Harris, 3711 Row Drive here in Dickinson. I don't suppose I'm gonna get any applause when I get through here, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I wrote this out. I've lived here in Dickinson since 1988, 35 years. I believe most, if not all of you know me either by name or by face because I attend many of these council meetings. In the last local election, as you all well know, a little over 2,000 citizens voted to choose the current mayor and three council members. But by any estimate, that's a very poor turnout, since I believe there are well over 12,000 people registered to vote here. And I'm gonna go off script a little bit. I wonder how many folks in this room here tonight actually showed up to vote. Even if I didn't vote for you, I'm here to tell you that I support you. And I think many good things are happening in Dickinson. Maybe there's a, a few things that need to be changed or corrected, but there are some good things happening. I'm seeing those things, things that were neglected by the past administrations. That's plural. I'm deeply saddened by the people inside and outside this city that are making this council and our city leaders appear not to have everyone's best interest at heart. I believe you do. I believe all of you up here have our best interests at heart. Even if I don't always agree with you, I think you have our best interests at heart. And I'll leave you with this thought. If someone believes there's a problem and they identify that problem and refuse to offer a solution or work, to implement a workable solution, then they're part of the problem. Thank you.
All right. And I think the last general comment that we have here is Melissa Skipworth.
Hi, I'm Melissa Skipworth. I live at 1061 Misty Cliff Drive. And let me just get my bearings here because man, that's ridiculous. It's ridiculous where we have come from and where we are now. In the words of many, Dickinson was the town that wasn't going to recover. It was said that we wouldn't come back from Harvey. It was said that we wouldn't come back from Harvey, but after the storm, we showed the world what defined Dickinson. The community came together and fostered a strong sense of belonging and support. We are a community that often celebrates our history, our values, and our traditions, creating a strong bond that withstands the test of time. Whether it's gathering at local diners for morning coffee, supporting local businesses, or coming together for town festivals, Friday Night Lights, and the biggest homecoming parades I have ever seen, Little League softball, Dickinson epitomizes the spirit of togetherness. Dickinson is a testament to the strength and enduring power of connection, where people, where people look out for one another, making it a place where not just homes, but hearts truly become homes. However, for the past several years, Dickinson has been hijacked by malicious disruptions sparked by misinformation and people with rinker in their hearts. And it has taken the form of harassment, stalking, threats to citizens, city employees, and our elected officials, our neighbors. It takes immense bravery to stand up and say, enough, we want our city back. Council, today, you can send a message that Dickinson will not tolerate the malice and discord disrupting our community. We need to come together and heal this city. A message that is, we need to send a message that this is not how we act towards our neighbors, spreading misinformation, harassment of others just because you didn't get your way or you simply don't like somebody. And that outsiders will not come into our community and shake us down without a fight. Please show these radicals who we are. We are Dickinson Strong. It will be through your and all the good people of Dickinson's collective courage that can inspire change, dismantle oppression, and ensure the voice of the marginalized are heard. Standing up for what is right is not only an act of bravery, but also a testament to our unwavering commitment to fairness, compassion, and the pursuit of a better community. Thank you, council.
All right. With that, we'll move on to item 9A, action items from executive session. Item 9A, consideration possible action to approve retaining Rusty Hardin and Associates' LLP for special legal services. I'm changing the language a bit, but.
I move to approve to retain Rusty Hardin and Associates for special counsel.
Second, my counsel, Brantley, discussion, I have a few items I'd like to say. First of all, the reason that we did that executive session item first was because very clearly was obvious, everybody was, maybe not everybody, but most of y'all were here to, for that particular item, and presumably you were gonna stay whether we did executive session at the beginning or the end. So we did it at the beginning to get that part over with, to come out, have the public comments, and then to go from there. So that was the reason for that change. That's also why we're doing item 6E next, because we have quite a few people sign up to speak on that item. So that's why. I want to say a few things, like, you know, some of the stuff that was set up here, we can't really respond to because it's not germane to this item, but the amount, the vitriol and the, the, just the gaslighting that has gone on and has escalated over the last two years has become incredible. And I think Creekside encapsulates what has happened, that the narrative that is being spun here, that we have, we came in to shut this place down, and that everything was great, and that there was no problems, is, is false. The community at large is false. When I see the attempts to peddle this narrative on social media, other than the same echo chamber, invariably, the public at large says that place was terrible, and it should have been shut down, and everybody in this town that is unbiased knows it. So everyone in here peddling that narrative, that's, it's false. The reason that I've, that I took this step to reach out to Hardin and Associates and put this forward to council is because the owners of Creekside were not honest with us. They did a bait and switch. They said they'd work with us. They did not. They bring in Tony Busby, they're raising the stakes. And this is to protect the citizens of this town from getting soaked in a bogus lawsuit, which is what is gonna happen if we don't take action to aggressively defend ourselves. And not only that, but to defend members of staff that have been accused, smeared in videos, told that they, you know, engage in criminal acts, following members of council, around members of the staff, making casual conversations about political murder, about purging people from the earth, about how long it takes to dispose of a corpse. At this, you're out of order. No. No, you're out of order. You're out of order. It is not deliberation.
Yes, it is.
No. Okay, everyone, stop. Or we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to remove people from the room if we can't stop.
No, I'm not.
Stop. Okay, would you please remove her from the room? Okay, everybody, please stop.
That's just ridiculous. The same way you arranged everything to have your wife speak last, that is.
All right, please leave. All of this, we can't even just have a discussion in here anymore. Anything that we tried to do, we have this kind of behavior that goes on. We have people that were in this room that have laid hands on staff members in this chamber, have harassed staff members in this chamber, and it needs to stop. And I support us taking aggressive action to let us do our jobs, to continue the work that we've done, working on streets, improving things, having our employees improve customer service. These are all things I hear from the residents. Most of this town feels that there's progress, and they're tired of all the perceived grievances that everybody is airing. And I'm, and I'm over it on a personal level, but more from an organization of what we're trying to do. And that's why I brought this forward. And I, and I hope the council will accept it so that we can begin aggressively defending the city, aggressively defending the work we're doing, aggressively defending the community in the interest of the taxpayers, to get things done so we don't get bilked and slowly bled through frivolous PIRs, through lawsuits, through shakedowns legally to get us to pay out settlements, because that's where we're at. Are there any other questions or comments on this item?
Mayor, before, before any actions taken, if you have anybody that signed up specifically for this item to speak, then.
Yes, there was one, you're correct. I did forget one person. Kathy Palmer. Thank you for the reminder.
Before the clock starts, I want to thank the council, figure that, for your help in us stopping the permit that was almost granted and applied for, for the VRBO on our street, Casa Grande. Kathy Palmer, 5022 Casa Grande. And that's going back to court this week for an update, so we hope that it will be denied again. My comment that I wanted to make, and I'm gonna make, was I've heard about the possible approximately $30 million lawsuit that's gonna be filed against Dickinson, because some people, this is all hearsay, that they made comments to the people about Creekside, downplaying it because some other people wanted to invest in it. If that's the case, I just, I just beg you to all think about this. You know all about it, and I don't know hardly anything. But if we were wrong in doing that, and by we, I mean the city, I didn't tell anybody anything, but somebody did, not the council, but some people somewhere. If we're wrong, and we're gonna lose, you think we're gonna lose, I don't want us to spend a whole lot of more money on another Rusty Hardin or anybody else that you're thinking about to defend us if your common sense and good judgment tells us that we're gonna lose. And that's what I hear. So, and I didn't know that I was gonna come after the fact, after you have your discussion. I don't know if you've already voted on what to do.
No.
Okay, then at least promise us that you're gonna use common sense in this, because sometimes we are wrong. And if we are, God help us if we spend another, you know, who knows how much to hire somebody like that. Got it? Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
First of all, can you sue a city? If individuals do that, another entity can come in, like the owners of Creekside, and come in and sue us. Is that correct?
I mean, we can't really, it's a legal discussion. We can't really talk about legal strategy and open.
A lawyer that he didn't think we could, but I don't know, but he, he's pretty on I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. And I apologize for, I apologize for overlooking you and not having you before we started the comments.
I want you to apologize for keeping us here for an hour. That's what I want. That's what I want, and we deserve it. We deserve it. We, I've been here since I was 12 years old, and I care about Dickinson a lot. Otherwise, I wouldn't be living here through all this. I was, I'm a retired teacher from this town. I tutor at my kitchen table to kids that come to my house from the school bus, and I care about what goes on here. But you've gotta care about us, and what you did was childish and rude, and I think it was planned, and that's why I'm so upset about it. To put us off and have half the people leave when you, you give this big message out there, we want the community to come and play a role in what we do. Well, give us the information and give us the respect that you are demanding from us. I do respect you, but after tonight, that is in question to me, because that was the most immature, shameful thing. And I, we all deserve an apology.
Are there other questions or comments on this item? All right. Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
With Councilman Schick and Councilman Townsend voting no, the motion carries. We will move on to item 6E, which is to conduct a public hearing concerning a request for a specific use permit for group home in a conventional residential zoning district for approximately plus or minus .31 acres located at 3025 Sherwood Oaks Street and legally described as abstract 19, Perrin Austin, Sir, Lot 11, Sherwood Oaks. I do want to note that this is, this item will have a public hearing item only. It does not have a, there is no action item on this tonight. So please be aware. With that said, we will convene this public hearing at 9:05 PM, and we will begin with the staff presentation. Yes, there's, there's a bunch of people that are here as well.
Okay, found it. I'm there. Okay, so this property is located on Sherwood Oaks, right off of Deets, and basically right at a curve of the, the street there. What's being proposed is a group home. This is the site plan that is of the site. And that is what staff has.
All right. So we have several public comments on this item, but do we have an applicant presentation?
We do.
Okay. If you would please come forward. If you could give your name and your address, please.
Thank you. My name is Bola James, and I live in Lake City, 508 Cedar Pond Drive, Lake City. And these are my slides that I would like to go through briefly. I want to make you understand the definition of a group home. It's a community-based residential home operated to meet the need of the elderly and the disabled. It's basically to furnish food, shelter, personal care, healthcare, medication, supervision, and activities of daily living and social needs. So in this, why is this type of a community supposed to be within a community? It's not supposed to be isolated from a community. With this type of setting, there are different types of regulations that need to be met. Once it's been established for a purpose, that purpose cannot be changed abruptly. So there's Texas Health and Human Services Commission that are basically going to be auditing from time to time. There's the Texas Department of Aging and Disability. Also, there's Texas Health and Safety Codes that need to be met. And the intention is just to have a small group home where there's individualized care. It's not going to be more than eight to 10 residents in there. And as much as possible, these people will be supervised by licensed individuals. The last time we met, there were some grievances, there were some comments made, but indeed, this business will not interfere closely with any of the neatly formed unit you guys might have before now, because most of the residents are just gonna be indoors. They do not move around much. They'll be more concerned about their health than interfering with your community. And also, people raised the issue of safety. Safety is key to me, and it's key to you as well. An example that was raised then was that there's a trampoline that people use all the time. Why would the trampoline be in the front of a street and not the backyard? If you guys say that this place is supposed to be close to a street and would disturb traffic, why would kids be playing in front of a, of a building on a street that's claimed to be dangerous? You talked about ambulances coming to disrupt your setting. That's not the case. These people are not critically ill, but they just need assistance with their daily living, and they do not go out unsupervised. The traffic is not going to be any more than it is now, because even if they have to go out, it's gonna be in a communal manner whereby just one van will take them to where they need to go to and come back for their other activities. You also talked about the property value being lowered. That makes no sense. The property values are going to go up when businesses come into any community. You talked about residences, you know, you talked about safety in terms of your children and stuff like that. The people we'll be taking care of are not on social welfare. They're not sex offenders. They're not alcoholics, and they have no way of mingling with your families. So it's okay to keep your neatly formed unities, but with this business, nobody's gonna interfere with that, because people will be more concerned about their health. And this community has no homelessness association. It has no deed restrictions. I have a few questions to the city. Does the city of Dickinson ordinance or proposed action provide a reasonable accommodation for use and for people to enjoy the dwelling? Does the city include group homes in its zoning or its ordinances? Is it enforceable to require an SUP for a group home but not request some, but not require same for residents containing equal number of people in them? Can the city of Dickinson demonstrate that conditions given have a rationale and non-discriminative basis to all their intentions? Does the city's ordinance or proposed action provide for reasonable accommodation when such accommodations may be necessary to afford equal opportunity to use and enjoy dwelling? In addition to that, there are state laws, there are federal laws that prohibits people who are disabled from staying wherever they need to stay. One of the applicable laws is the overarching law in regard to regulation of group homes is the prohibition, prohibition against discrimination in housing, in housing discrimination can be challenged. This can be challenged, especially when you have no homelessness association, you have no deed restrictions. It can be challenged. Our involvement basically will be dealing with 50% of residents of clients that are challenged in their ways of thinking, those who have Alzheimer's disease or dementia diseases. How will they interfere with you guys? And the other 50% will be those who have like chronic diseases like hypertension, diabetes, osteoarthritis, and COPD and things like that. Us is just to make sure they can maintain their lifestyle even with these conditions they are facing in a, in a, in a home setting, in a family kind of setting. That's the purpose. Gone are the days where you put patients or clients in nursing homes and forget about them, or they get, you know, just forgotten about. But in this day and age, people are wanting more family-focused, family-oriented setting for their elderly patients. In closing, I want to leave you with this, because most of you claim to be Christians, but you- with this, because most of you claim to be Christians, but you do not practice what you say. The poor, you will always have with you, and you can help them anytime you want. But are you willing to help? These are poor in terms of not being able to help themselves in terms of their health. That's why they're poor. They are going to be with us in the society. Thank you.
All right, we have several public comments for this item. So the first comment is Joan Malmrose.
Sorry, I forgot about the statistics. I'll just brush through it quickly. It's three minutes up.
Joan, well, is, you're presenting, so you don't, you're not limited by the, the three minutes, but, um...
From the current statistics, it's like, there's nothing we can do about the population of baby boomers. They will need help, and we can't leave it to the government to do. You know, it says, um, in one of the, um, research I did, about 818,000 Americans currently reside in assisted living communities. It's not anything new. This is roughly about 2% of the seniors over the age of 65. With the rapidly growing senior population, there's need for group homes, you know, that are, you know, cared for. People are cared for the way they want to be cared for, not in a nursing home where you have hundreds of people. From now until 2030, 10,000 baby boomers will reach retirement age, and that includes those seated here tonight. Whether you like it or not, you'll soon fall into that bracket for those who are not yet in that bracket. By 2040, over 80 million people in the United States will have 65-year-olds, will be 65-year-olds, and with that number growing to nearly 95 million by 2060, according to U.S. Census Bureau. In the City of Dickinson alone, from your demographics, you have 65 of these people residing here currently. While non-Hispanic families are the least li, sorry, white, non-Hispanic, Hispanic families are the least likely to care for aging relatives at home. Most of the time, they're ready to put them somewhere, and they are most likely to seek senior living communities before medical challenges come. We cannot rely on the government alone to effectively meet the growing need of baby boomers and their living arrangements. It's a huge problem and needs to be solved by you and I. Thank you.
All right, now, Joan, if you'd like to come out and give your comment.
Good evening, and first, let me thank you all for your service. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this town, and I certainly appreciate that. My name is Joan Malmrose. I live at 2716 Frostwood Circle, around the circle from her, um, from this house. The first thing I want to say is, this is a business that she's presenting. It's not a group home. It's a business that you are going to make money from. The rest of this neighborhood is a neighborhood of homes and families. That's totally different. A business is there to make money. Homes are there to, to take care of their families and to grow equity in their homes. Um, you know, our neighborhood was once an upscale neighborhood, and, um, in fact, the house that she, she bought next to was, um, gays lived in that house. It was a very, very expensive house. I can't believe that they, that the house is going to increase because there's a group home, a business, next to it. Um, our neighborhood also suffers from being a cutoff from sunset, so lots of cars come racing through our neighborhood, and it really concerns me that the house is on a curve. Um, so people, children are on that street. We do not have sidewalks. Children are on the street. Walkers, I walk on the street because there's no sidewalks. When those cars come running, racing through, it's rather scary. Her house is on a corner, and there are going to be more cars, um, at that house. Not only workers, but then we have occupational therapists, physical therapists, dieticians, nurses. So it's going to be a busy street, and I don't care what she says, there are going to be more ambulances. When you having assisted living with senior sick attendings, there's going to be more ambulances. So again, increased traffic. Um, as she said, we have no HOA, so we can't really monitor her house. When I drove by it today, the front lawn really needs to be cut, and, you know, um, she's not even being a good neighbor now. So I have a, a problem with that. I, I understand that these houses, that we need to provide group houses, and I would be okay if it was closer to Deets, but it's right in the middle of our neighborhood. It's not on the edge. It's in the middle. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is that we do have a very strong neighborhood. Um, we have a very strong Facebook group. We always do Neighborhood Night Out. Lots of people here are going to talk about this. So, um, you know, I think if this moves in, there's going to be a lot of complaints, and I wouldn't, wouldn't want to wish that on you. So, last thing, this is a business in a neighborhood of homes. I just really object to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, it's remarkable that you hit exactly three minutes. Um, I don't know how you, you did that. You, you, I'm serious, you were dead on, so. Um, and next we have Debbie Borland.
Hi, I'm Debbie Borland. I live at 3029 Crest Drive. Um, obviously, I'm against this. First, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Briscoe and Mr. Pruitt and Mr. Schick, because I was here for the zoning and planning presentation, and since then, she's seen a lawyer, I think. So, um, they answered a lot of my questions, and, but I still have hope. So, within a 20-minute walk from my front door, I hit nine sober homes and two senior homes, and only one of those 11 places has a resident owner. As Joan just said, this has nothing to do with us discriminating against anybody, discriminating against the elderly, which is frankly insulting. We don't want a business in our residential area, plain and simple. That's what it is. We're tired of it. We have enough in our area. When you allow businesses like this one to come in, we all lose a neighbor. We all lose the band parents and the scout troop leaders and the people who, like me, were chasing after the neighbor's dog today because I didn't want to call animal control because I knew whose dog it was. But in a business, that doesn't happen. We just lost that. And what's going to happen is if we continue to allow these to come into our neighborhoods, we lose our neighborhoods. We fundamentally change what our city is. Our city is house, house, group home, house, house, group home. I mean, that's really what it's become, because as Ms. James has mentioned, she's applied to have 10 residents live there, not neighbors. These are people who are going to live there temporarily. I know this. Both of my parents, my mom has since passed, she was in assisted living. My dad was in assisted living, and their home situation was much more like the one on Oak, which if you didn't know before the flood, you might have seen it after the flood. It was the one that made the national news with old people sitting in water up to their chins. Texas has always valued homeowners, home setters, and we need to continue that. We need to tip the scales back to homeowners and away from these businesses. It's time for you guys to take some action. You need to mitigate the expansion of these insidious businesses in our residential area. There's a cluster of four of them on Yopon alone. Yopon's not that big a street. It runs from 517 to Deets, and there are four of, four group homes on Yopon that, that I know of. There could be more. Those are the ones that I know of, because I've walked past them. It's time for you guys to rework the city zoning. Ms. Briscoe told me it's dated 2001. Yikes. Um, we can find places for these businesses. I don't think anybody, Joan or anybody else is going to speak. We all know that there's a need. She's got the statistics right there. But we need to put them where they're not going to have a negative input, ne, negative impact on our neighborhood.
You spoiled, that's your time.
I beg your pardon?
Your time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have, is it, is it Beatty, Ben Beatty? I apologize if I mispronounced that.
I walk slow, so don't start judging me on time.
I, I didn't start it till you, you know, you're good, you're good.
Honorable counsel and mayor, I want to thank you for the opportunity, but close your eyes a minute.
Gladly, I'm a little tired, I can do that.
All right, now, visualize where you live. Do you want a business sitting next door to you? Do you want the, uh, cars coming by? Do you want the, all the amenities that assisted living brings? Now, assisted living, there is a need for it. I'll admit that. But when you have assisted living, are you isolated? Are there's no, there's no people ever come to see you because you're sick? You know, can you imagine the number of people that are going to come there? You know, there's going to be 10 people there. Well, that doesn't mean there's only going to be 10 people that's going to come there and have 10 vehicles. Uh, have you gone down Yopon? I went by there tonight. There must be 10, 15 cars out there on Yopon. That's an assisted living place. You know, we need to look into stuff like that. Now, we used to live in Memorial in Houston back in, in the 70s. We came to Dickinson because it was the place to live. It was a residential area, and that was before Dickinson was a city. That was before Dickinson was a village. You know, we elected to come to Dickinson because it gave us the amenities of a nice place to live and grow up with our children. Uh, in the sake of brevity, I'd like to, uh, tell you that if a business gets next door to you, the taxes on your house are not going to go up. They're going to go down, and I, for one, Ben Beatty, will be at the tax, uh, place to protest my taxes if I have a business there. And excuse me for jumping around. I just jotted down some things. Uh, you know, it's kind of funny that if somebody from another city would want to come to our city and, and create a business, that she couldn't get a permit in that city. Kind of strange, isn't it? Well, we're not that, we're not that lax that we're going to let that go by. You know, we are a residential area, and there are plenty of places in the City of Dickinson around on Deets, uh, not, excuse me, on, um, 3 and 517, that they could have an assisted living house if they wanted to. We are zoned. I was a part of the zoning commission back when they started the City of Dickinson, and we are zoned, and we are, the zoning commission has set that forth, and we ought to obey by it. We are a residential area, and we need to stay a residential area. Um, you know...
Mr. Beatty, that's your time.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Beatty, that's your time.
That's my time. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have, the first name, is that Brown Hill? Or, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, maybe marginally, I'm marginally illiterate. Okay, okay. Oh, I see which, okay, what you did there. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, thank you for your time. Um, I have a few que, oh, excuse me, I live at, uh, 2904 Frostwood, and I take offense by those statistics, because by that statistic, my house is a group home already, because we're both 65 already. Damn. Anyways, um, I have some questions that haven't been asked from the first meeting that we had and now this meeting. Uh, I'm curious about the business that's going in there and what that business is. What's the structure of it? Is it a corporation? If it's a corporation, how many companies are under it? How many companies have been under that corporation? Has that corporation ever been in trouble? Has any of the businesses that corporation has ever owned been closed? And what type of businesses? Did they have group homes elsewhere? Is there any investigation going on, on that end? I agree with all my great neighbors that I don't think a group home belongs in the middle of a neighborhood. I've only been in Dickinson for three years. Um, but I kind of like that neighborhood. It's pretty nice. Got a nice house there and everything else. I don't want to see property values go down. I don't want to pay any more taxes, but I don't want to see property values go down either. So I would be curious as to what the history of that business is or the corporation is. Um, what, who owns the corporation? Have any of them ever been in trouble? And the obvious reason is, has there any, been any weird stuff go on in the past, and why are they here? Like, if the question was asked, why aren't they in Houston? Why aren't they, you know, why are they trying to go into a neighborhood, which sounds to me like they're hiding from something? Get out in the open. Get where people can find you. I mean, it's too bad, the things I've heard tonight have really surprised me about Dickinson. I didn't know all these things were going on, and I hope everybody's able to work them out, but I looked at that project over there, uh, Creekside, and I was like, boy, that would be a great place to have group home living. You know, all those wonderful apartments that could be remodeled, and you could take care of so many elder. I would support that 100%. I'd go over there and volunteer, but not in my neighborhood. I, I, I don't agree with that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next, we have Stephen Termini.
Hi, thank you. I'm a teacher. I usually work without notes, so thank you very much for your service tonight. Uh, my name's Stephen Termini. I live at 2714 Frostwood Circle. I've been living in that neighborhood for most of my life. Um, uh, just like it was said tonight, uh, we love our neighborhood. We're involved. We love each other. We're, uh, we're very active voters in our neighborhood. Uh, we keep our eyes open, and when sort of an off-site investor comes in to open a business in the middle of our neighborhood, we definitely pay attention to that. Um, actually, uh, my mom was in a nursing home for the last, and assisted living, actually, for the yet, last year and a half or so of her life, and so I, I got to really respect the people that work in these types of businesses, the medical personnel, the nurses, the food suppliers. Um, you know, my hat's off to them. I love these people. Um, but anyone who's ever had a family member or someone they know in that type of industry learns very quickly a couple of things about that. The first one is that, like it's already been mentioned, it is a business, uh, with paid employees, tax ID numbers, paying customers. Um, also, you very quickly learn that, uh, you know, it, it isn't just those residents that live there that are going to be sort of involved. There's not only the people that actually work there that are coming in and out, whatever time of day or night, depending on what shift they work. You also have people that are coming to visit. You also have deliveries being made, food deliveries. You have packages arriving, medical supplies. You have people, I know they talked about bringing a van with a group of people out on activities, great, but people can't have all of their doctor's appointments at the same time and bring a van for that. There's people dropping people off to and from doctor's appointments. A number of years ago, maybe 15, 20, I don't remember now. You could probably look it up, at 2902 Frostwood Circle, only five houses down, we had a doctor and his family move in. Great, we love doctors. Uh, he actually decided he wanted to start seeing patients in his house. Um, and as predicted, as anyone would guess, yes, cars picked up in that area. It's right on a corner. Kids riding their bikes around the corner, people walking their dogs, family getting exercise. Like, like I said, there's no sidewalks there. Uh, there's no particular parking lot there, so a lot of people have to park in the street, uh, for a business like this. Uh, and now it feels like this much time later on, here we are, five houses down the other direction. Pretty much, I feel like we're trying to fight the same fight again. Uh, here we have someone else opening a type of medical business, uh, and as was done at 20, 2902, um, the city rightfully said, no, you can no longer have your, your doctors practice in your house. Um, it's not that we're not compassionate. Our neighborhood, we love each other very much, and I think it's kind of a little bit cheap to play the Christian card, the discrimination card. I think it would be a very misguided sort of compassion and Christianity to actually put an outside investor ahead of our own families. We love each other, but we also know where our priorities lie. We support very much what you're doing, but not in the middle of our neighborhood. Uh, we love very much the personnel that work there. We have very much compassionate respect for that, but there's a time and a place for everything. And just like the council one month ago, the zoning council unanimously decided, and we hope that carries a lot of weight, we also hope tonight, you will also, as our elected representatives, do exactly that, represent us and our families in saying, no, do not change the zoning in our neighborhood. Leave it residential and let the businesses be in a business district, not in the middle of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you also, sir, that's two in one night. We had another exactly, exactly three minutes. Um, I, but the, the public comment sheets are really chaotic tonight, so there's a lot of things scattered around, um, and people have written various things down. Um, I believe I've gotten everyone that signed up for Item 6E. I believe so. Okay. With that said, uh, there is applicant rebuttal if you would like to, uh, respond to anything. You don't have to, but you, you can if you'd like.
Thank you for the opportunity. Um, like, you want to look for a job, for instance. You don't, you know, most of the time, you don't look for a job where you live. You go further where there's, you know, things for you to benefit from. So I've considered what's going to benefit So I've considered what's going to benefit me and the neighborhood I'm in, and I've chosen that. Most of the time, in this day and age, businesses are being conducted within homes since COVID. So a lot of neighbors, you think are not doing anything, they're doing businesses within their home settings. So for you to now say businesses are not allowed in residential areas, that's not been up to date. Um, somebody wanted to find out, is this a corporation or anything? That's your business, you need to dig into it and research it and, um, find out exactly what it is. But as for me explaining all that to you, I don't have that time to explain that.
All right, thank you. Um, with that, we will adjourn the public hearing at nine thirty-four PM. I, I do want to say just for the, just for clarity, there is, there is no action item on this tonight, so there will be no vote taken to approve or disapprove this group home this evening, all right? Just everybody is aware. Um, all right, that said, we'll move to item, excuse me. Item six A, conduct a public hearing concerning a request to amend the official zoning map from conventional residential, uh, zoning district to general commercial zoning district for approximately plus or minus point one eight acres located at thirty-four oh-four Avenue D, legally described as abstract nineteen Perry and Austin, sir, lot eleven Emmett subextension, and a request to amend the official zoning map for neighborhood commercial zoning district to general commercial zoning district for the approximately plus or minus point sixteen acres located at thirty-four oh-five Highway three, legally described as abstract nineteen Perry and Austin, sir, part of lot one-one-eight three dash zero Dickinson addition D, uh, staff presentation. We will begin the public hearing at nine thirty-five PM.
This is actually two pieces of property, one that is zoned neighborhood commercial that faces five seventeen, and a second that is actually landlocked, that has an Avenue D address that's zoned conventional residential. The request is actually to change both of these pieces of property to general commercial. And so it's kind of like two different zonings to one zoning for both. Um, and then, um, basically, flat rezoning to general commercial um, would allow all of those uses on both of those. The intent is actually to use that back lot as parking so that the front existing building can meet requirements for a business to go in. And that is what staff has.
All right, thank you, do we have an applicant presentation for this evening? All right.
Good evening all, thank you all very much for what you do. Eddie Bandak, three eight one three Pine Manor Lane Dickinson. Um, the building, what we're trying to do here is combining the lot behind it to the existing building. Um, the existing building is commercial on Highway three um, with not enough parking to comply with getting, um, a permit or to proceed forward with having what we hope is an Italian restaurant. So the, um, lot in the back is what we're seeking to be joined to it, to give it enough parking to do that. We've tried to get a lot from the neighbor, which is, sorry, an eyesore from where that mechanic is, and we couldn't be successful. So, um, we're here seeking your approval for that as they've done before, and we hope we would be, uh, accepted by this, and thank you again, appreciate you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, we have no public comments on this item, so there's no applicant rebuttal. So we will adjourn the public hearing at nine thirty-seven PM. Move on to item six B. Consideration and possible action concerning a request to amend the official zoning map from conventional residential zoning district to general commercial zoning district for approximately plus or minus point one eight acres located at thirty-four oh-four Avenue D, legally described as abstract nineteen Perry and Austin, sir, lot eleven Emmett subextension, and a request to amend the official zoning map from neighborhood commercial zoning district to general commercial zoning district for the approximate plus or minus point one six acres located at thirty-four oh-five Highway three, legally described as abstract nineteen Perry and Austin, sir, part of lot one-one-eight three dash zero Dickinson addition D, first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Say motion approved by Councilman Simpson, is there a second?
Second.
Second approved by Councilman Linton, is there any discussion? Uh, Councilman Schick?
Yes, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. So staff recommended approval for both lots, and then planning and zoning, and that was by a unanimous vote. There used to be an easement between, or it was, I'm sorry, there used to be an alley between it, that has been abandoned. We need to figure out a little bit about that, there is a WCID line in it, so we will have to have an easement there, they can't put a building on top of that. So there's some things to work out prior to permitting, but zoning is the first step.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Townsend?
Yeah, please, so are they going to be, this is a parking lot in the back where the old house burnt down. So are they going to be able to use Avenue D as an exit, or are they going to come in and out off of three?
At this time, that's not been determined. I believe that they would have to need to come in and out from Highway three because there's not access to that Avenue D, there's a lot that's actually private property.
So as of today, there's a fence with cars on, I'm going to call it the north side, the Rose Street side. Uh, all the other cars supposedly belong to the repair shop?
Yes, to the south.
So how they going to get all them cars off of his property? So they're going to come in off the east side, or they're going to come, the south side is their driveway in there, or off that north side between the building and the fence?
That would need to be determined at permitting prior to, to development. So that would be something that we would address when it comes to that, once they have the zoning.
Any other questions or comments? Right, hearing done, we'll take this to vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Move on to item six C. Conduct a public hearing concerning a request for subdivision variance from appendix A subdivision, section eight standards and specifications subsection J, lot subsection three, frontage requirement of the city of Dickinson code of ordinances, with such variance allowing a lot to substitute frontage on a recorded access easement private street for the required frontage on a public street for a proposed subdivision of approximately point six two-two acres, generally located west of Lighthouse Lane and north of Derek Street, and legally described as abstract two oh eight WK Wilson, sir, part of lot four, uh, four dash three block fourteen Beatty subdivision. We will, um, we will, um, begin the public hearing at nine forty PM. Yvonne?
This piece of property is on the west side of Lighthouse Lane, basically kind of where Derek Street hits it. Starboard Lane, Derek, and Lighthouse are all private streets. Um, part of the application, there was a, uh, maintenance agreement included in that. Uh, but because they are not public streets, then they do not meet our subdivision regulation for access onto a public right-of-way. Um, and so originally, when this was plotted, it was plotted as much larger lots. It's then been split up. So before they can put a house on this property, they do need to plat the property. Um, and since they cannot meet the subdivision regulation, that's why they're asking for this variance to front off of a private street or access easement instead of the private, the right-of-way, and that's what staff has.
All right, thank you, do we have an applicant presentation for this item? Does not look like it. Okay, we do have, I believe, two public comments on this item. Uh, first is Kathy Jo Love? Oh, you'd like to go, so yeah, I have two different sheets, and so I know everybody thinks I'm up to shenanigans tonight, but everything is like crazy out of order, so I apologize. Yes, you are first on the other sheet, so Chris Tucker.
Uh, Chris Tucker, fifty-two seventeen Calvert Lane. So a little background on this is that, um, there was a house that was sold there, they had the option to buy the property, and it's a buffer property. It's always been that to protect the neighborhood for making sure someone isn't going to come in and put a small house in a very narrow lot. Uh, this particular area has, um, the properties are all spread out, that kind of stuff. Um, I guess one of my first questions, and maybe someone can answer this, is that who submitted, who's the applicant in, on this? Because I'm confused because it's, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Mr. Tucker, we'll have, we'll have discussion after this, this is the public hearing after this.
Yeah, I can't answer, but we can answer that on the action item, yes.
So, um, anyway, so this is a buffer piece of property, and the way I understand it is that they're wanting to take, and there's a abandoned easement there that they do not own, and that they want to take and wrap around and to get to the past their hundred and twenty-five feet, and they're going to take some land, use some land that they don't own, and they don't have the right to do this. Uh, the impact to the neighbors and, and to, is going to be multiples is that, um, for Joe and Kathy, for example, and for Carrie Huntley, uh, that kind of stuff, their driveways are right there, their entrances to their properties are right there, and that's going to impact them on there. The other thing is, is that, um, when they bought the property, they understood what that's, what the purpose was going to be. So the house was sold, the property was a separate transaction, and, but it was under the condition, everyone understood that whoever bought the house had the option to buy the, the property, and they did, but now they're wanting to build on it, and it's never intended that way. The whole thing is to have the spacing between the different houses. Um, that's pretty much in a nutshell, but like I said, when you look at it, I'm confused about who the applicant is, and then also, um, it, it doesn't make sense, it's, you're using somebody's property that you don't own, and then you're impacting the other residents there. Um, there's other people you're going to talk here in just a minute, and they can explain to you, you know, what the impact is to them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so next, now, would you like to, uh, would you like to go? Okay, oh, okay, you're going to speak, okay.
Hope y'all are all doing good. Uh, Joe Love, I live at lot, uh, fifty-three fourteen Lighthouse Lane. So, uh, yeah, my, my worry is it's going to be a big impact on me. My house is, uh, to the south of this right-of-way, and it would be, actually, they would have to come right across my driveway even to use the right-of-way because that is a private road that makes a turn. Uh, it's Derek, it makes a turn, and that's what I turn off to to get into my house. If they extended Derek, then it would be, my driveway would turn into their access road. So I'm really concerned about, you know, the area, and that's why we all bought out there, you know, we bought, I bought. And at one time, I even could have bought that land, but it was told to me then, hey, that's, it's not, can't buy it, it's an easement, and it's not necessary, it's a buffer between the two, the two lands. So, you know, I didn't feel the need to. Uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm kind of upset about it because at one time, I could have purchased it, I couldn't purchase it, I was told I couldn't, you know, because of the buffer. And I said, well, that's fine, as long as I've got a buffer and nobody builds there. I mean, that's why we like it out there. If you know the Humble Camp Road area, it's, it's a very nice area, there are things, everybody's a part. And I'm fixing to have somebody right up on me, they actually want to build a road. The access road that they would have to use would be right against my fence, like, within six inches. Actually, there's a, a water meter there, they would be touching the water meter, the, you know, with a little lid that comes up. It's on the outside of my fence, uh, on the north side, and they want to build between a fire hydrant and a water line, which is right between it. So the only buffer I would have would be between the water main that they can't build on. And, uh, just makes it very upsetting, but, you know, anyway, that's as far as I got. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate you very much.
All right, thank you. Um, so we have no applicant, uh, here, so there's no applicant rebuttal, so we will adjourn the public hearing at nine forty-six PM. Oh, I'm sorry, was there somebody else? I apologize. Sorry, I, uh, like I said, the, the sign-in sheets are very, um, yeah, okay, okay. Just be sure to state your name and your address first.
Sure, uh, Justin Schwartz, fifty-two oh-nine Calvert Lane. I didn't really prepare much, just wanted to say that, you know, uh, anyone who knows Dickinson or has lived here any amount of time knows the Humble Camp area is a highly desired area. It's country living in the city, right? So, um, I would just implore the city council not to set the precedent of a subdivision variance um, that could be used later on in the area and start shrinking these lots and shrinking the property. I mean, this is why we bought out there, this is highly desired for everybody who lives out there, builds out there, is to have that space of that property, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I believe we've gotten everybody on that one, so we'll adjourn the public hearing at nine forty-seven PM. And, um, we'll move on to item six D. Yes, okay. Consideration and possible action concerning a request for a subdivision variance from appendix A subdivision, section eight standards and specifications, subsection J, lot subsection three, frontage requirement of the city of Dickinson code of ordinances, with such variance allowing a lot to substitute frontage on a recorded access easement slash private street for the required frontage on a public street. For, I think I said, yes, uh, for a proposed subdivision of approximately plus or minus point six two-two acres, generally located west of Lighthouse Lane and north of Derek Street, and legally described as abstract two oh eight west, I'm sorry, WK Wilson, sir, part of lot four, four dash three, block fourteen Beatty subdivision. Is there a motion to approve or? It's motion approved by Councilman Brantley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by, uh, Councilman Simpson. So there was a question about the applicant, could you maybe address that for Mr. Tucker?
Yes, so, um, I've got a copy of the application, so the property owner is Michael S. Bailey. The applicant is Michael's niece, who has power of attorney, Samantha B. Walker. And so I've got that, so if they need that. The other things that I would say is, they're not able to build on property that's not theirs. They're not able to, e- even the easements that are there, they can't do anything on the easements except get their access to their current property. Um, those easements are already there.
Well, let me, go ahead. And Councilman Simpson?
I, I was going to ask, um, but I think the recommendations may answer it. The property hasn't like been platted yet, has it?
The whole purpose of this variance is to allow them to submit a plat application.
Okay, um, I would like to offer an amendment, uh, to the motion. I'm looking at the recommendations from staff and council. Um, that it says a plat application must be submitted and approved by the city of Dickinson, recorded with Galveston County Clerk within twelve months of approval, and a statement clearly denoted on the face of the recorded plat saying that this, um, plat is subject to the city of Dickinson resolution number and improperly deal, uh, that also a statement clearly denoted on the face of the plat recording, this plat is subject to Galveston County filing numbers nine five one one seven nine and two thousand twelve zero one zero zero eight two six, and, uh, finally, that the neighbors present at the public hearing and the surrounding property owners be notified when the plat application is submitted.
Is there a second?
I second that amendment.
All right, and there's a second, is there any discussion about the amendment? And we'll take this to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With, uh, Councilwoman Simpson and Councilman Schick voting no, is that right? And Councilman Townsend voting no, so the motion carries?
The amendment?
The amendment carries.
Yeah, amendment, yeah, we had, no vote has been happened, and we were voting on an amendment.
So, so essentially, what you just voted on is that it's that you're going to set the recommended, recommended conditions of the PNC and staff.
Yeah, so now we're back to the main. It's for the folks out there that, that don't follow Robert rules.
Robert rules one-on-one, you're amending them, the motion said this, we can amend it, then we got to approve the motion, so. So is there a discussion? There, there was definitely some, uh, um, disagreement on that, so is there a discussion on that?
I can, I can think, clear this up, I think we had one of these come before the PNC and then council, I think the last meeting, maybe the one before that. So the big, the, the main issue is that your, your subdivision ordinance plating has a main requirement that the city cannot even accept the plat application unless the lot fronts on a public street. And so you're going to have lots of issues with that, like we've had a couple come up recently, that you're going to have property that over time has been sold off by property owners, and they just don't get it platted. So if someone in this case comes in and wants to plat the property that they're supposed to do, what your rules will prohibit them from even doing that, in this kind of case where there's a private street access, or I think the one that we, we looked at a couple, like a last month, was there was a, a private access easement that they wanted to use as, to have you have a variance to that, to allow them to access that in lieu of the private, in lieu of the public street. So every time this is going to happen, you're, you're going to have that issue until your ordinance gets amended. You're not approving any of the development, you're not approving the plat, you're not approving any of that stuff, all you're doing by this variance is allowing the applicant to actually submit the plat for all those approvals or denials, depending on if they meet or, you know, do not meet, you know, city, city code. So that, that's really what the variance is. Um, the, the app, all the, all the people that spoke here and that spoke to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the reason that additional, uh, condition was added was because you're, although you're not approving anything here with the plat, you are opening the door for that, and this is where the, the, you know, the public hearing would happen here. If, as long as the plat satisfied all other code requirements, there would be no notification to neighbors. And so the neighbors wanted to have some kind of input to understand what's going to happen, and that's why that condition was added.
Okay, so now they would receive that notification, is that, okay.
Uh, if I, may, may I, just, okay, just want to make sure, mayor. Um, so, um, because I'm not as familiar with this easement, uh, instrument, uh, Justin and Yvonne, um, for this one. familiar with this easement instrument, Justin and Yvonne, for this one, in the last one, the caveat in that one was that they needed to resolve the easement issues in the last one. Is that going to be an issue here or is there like a recorded easement already in place for that?
So, so if I remember correctly, in this one, you have those private, those private streets there that she's included.
Yeah. So there was actually a maintenance agreement for Starboard, Derek and Lighthouse already in place. The easement is already in place and that's where if they want to do anything to those streets, everybody who's legally binding into the maintenance agreement would have to sign off on it. So they can't do anything to the streets. This is their property only. But there's already the maintenance agreement that's already existing for all three of those streets.
Okay. So just, you know, I'm trying to, you know, because this is like one of those where when I read it, I was like, oh, man, you know, you kind of have flashbacks to like year one property law a little bit every once in a while. So, uh, what I was going to try to, you know, kind of paint a picture a little bit for you guys is so, and I'll let Justin kind of get, get, you know, maybe clear it up a little bit. So easement exists. There's a maintenance agreement in place. So I want to just kind of just ask some basic questions. So plat application, let's say council says, okay, look, you know, there's an easement here. This is technically not, you know, we don't see this as a landlocked piece of property because there was a maintenance agreement to access this parcel. I'm just saying that that could be an argument. So I'm, so I'm playing that side. They go for a plat application. Obviously they want to be notified. That is the condition up there. What challenges, I guess, can be lodged in a future plat application, you know, that what, what conditions would have to be met to ensure quality development right there for the neighbors around them or whatnot?
So, so the plat application itself, so let me do this one. I'll get your answer a little differently. So the way I think about this, if some, if I owned, you know, forty acres and I just wanted somebody just, and no roads around it, anything like that, and I sold off ten acres to somebody that wanted it. Technically, I'm, there's supposed to be a plat recorded of that transaction. That almost, that doesn't happen all the time. Sometimes it happens. Sometimes it doesn't. Like this case, it didn't happen. Then your rules come in and you say you have to have a public street frontage. That's just not going to happen in some cases like this one. So the main issue you're going to deal with is state law requires property, properties to be platted. And, and if you have a prohibition on that, which is going to, I don't know if this is one of a thousand lots or one of two, I don't know, but it's, you're going to have some issues with your law, your ordinance that prohibits those property from being platted. So this variance, I mean, my suggestion would be that you go with the Plating Zoning Commission's recommendation to allow the variance, just so the property can enter the plating phase. And all it's going to happen, I mean, for all intensive purposes, there's a survey out there, we can show the boundaries, but the plat document itself, which is almost identical to that, needs to be filed and, and we're the body that's supposed to do that. And so, and the intent of plating is supposed to be just a, almost, almost a default approval. And so getting to what you're talking about for insured quality development, all that comes after the plat is issued. Your rule says you can't issue a permit on an unplatted property. And then your, your plating rule says you have to have public street access. So but granted the fact, the variance, what you're saying is that you're going to count this, this private, this private road as the public street just to enter the plating process. Then it's approval of the plating process. Then it's if any development permits are issued, they've all got to come in conformance of the code. And like Yvonne said, some of the issues raised by the neighbors is some of the proposed plans deal with property that's not going to be included in the plat. That's a completely different issue. This is about accepting an application for a plat. And right now you're prohibited from doing that because there's not a public road right there.
I guess, I guess, uh, to, I guess, let me see how I don't want to ask the question because I, because I really want to get to the heart.
Let me answer your question. So the way to do that is by adding conditions. You can add conditions to a subdivision variance application. So one thing that comes to my mind is the neighbors are concerned about them gaining access off Derek. One of the conditions could be that they have to have their access off of Lighthouse and it's prohibited on Derek. That, I mean, that, those types of things are the only, the conditions that are placed on it, that's the control that we have.
I guess my question then for you guys is, or Justin, you is that so if we deny the ability for this property to, because I guess you kind of threw out the thing about state law being like, you know, properties need to be platted, you know, that's a state requirement. So if we use this to block a plating, is that putting us in any type of situation, I guess?
I mean, I can't speak for the, sue you or anything. I don't know. But the, but the, but the default assumption under state law is that you are, you're going to approve plats. And that's, that's the, that's the structure of the state law. And so, I mean, again, my suggestion would be approve, approve the variance to allow the, at least the application to be submitted. You're not approving the plat even because it can't even be submitted yet. So you could even deny the plat at some point if you, if it came through and didn't satisfy terms. All you're doing is allowing a plat to even enter the application process. It can't even be done right now. That's the purpose of the variance is to allow someone to submit a plat to the city for even consideration.
Will there be an opportunity for the residents to be a part of that plat application process formulae, or is it formula boom out and?
Well, now, now, because again.
It's here. This is where it has to happen.
Well, the motion has been amended now to allow for that notice, notification to happen. So now as part of the process, you're going to have, if you approve this as amended, which, you know, you voted to do that. If you approve the motion now, then the neighbors will be notified as a normal zoning process. They'll just do it. But it's, we usually wouldn't apply that to a plating process, but you would apply that here.
So I understand what you're saying is that you need a plat to move forward and everything. But the question, the issue that's not being addressed is the applicant is looking to use a supposed easement on property they don't own and they don't control. So why would you move forward with that when they're using something that's not theirs? If that's the case, then does that mean I get to run down here and say, well, I'm going to go down five seventeen as my easement? I don't own it, but it's back to, well, but I can use it to cut the account towards my frontage.
So, so one of the conditions of this particular, the particular proposed variance is that the applicant has to plat, have a filed plat within twelve months and in the county, which would trigger exactly what you're talking about, is that if you as, as, so in order to approve the plat, the city's going to have to have some conditions on that. This, again, this is not what we're talking about here. This is the second step to even enter the application process. That's what we're talking about now. Your step would come in, if, if the, if the city were to even accept the application, then the standards would apply. What the city's going to require is the access and that's where it's all city codes are going to apply to that. And here particularly, what you're going to say is if they improve the variance and application submitted, then it's got to be twelve months, within twelve months filed of record, which can require that property owner to work with anybody mentioned in, in this case, that maintenance agreement for those roads to figure out where the access is going to be. And that's what's going to guide the, the city at that point. So right now, all that's happening right now is that the applicant can't even submit a piece of paper to the city.
Well, the applicant didn't even show up here to explain what they're going to do.
Right. But that, that's, I'm just saying that's the standard right now. The applicant can't, or any applicant for that matter, couldn't submit an application for a plat to the city unless it fronted a public road. So any, any property that needs to be platted in the city that doesn't front a public road is barred from plating in the city unless the council grants a variance. So right now, all that the council, all this variance would do would allow an applicant to enter the plating process and then all plating rules apply. And then after, even if those were to be approved and the plat was to be filed, then all development, all development regulations still apply. They're not waiving any of that. No, no, no permit's going to be waived, nothing like that. It's, it's, this is just the, the most initial step in the whole development process is can they even accept a plat? And they can't do that right now unless this variance is granted.
We're, we're a little out of order just because we, we don't usually do like back and forth, but.
The, the whole thing is, you're saying you're going to need to go plat something that you may not own to get to the point. Well, let me finish, please. Get to the point where saying they're going to spend all the money, time and effort, we as the residents, which it impacts, we're sitting there waiting to see which way the dice are going to drop. And to the, get to that point, it's kind of convoluted, if you will. It, it, I mean, it's kind of, it's pretty straightforward. If you don't own the land, you don't have access to it unless you get by the land or you get access to it. So why would you not do that when you have also the impacts, someone's driveways that have been there for twenty years? So it's going to affect them. It has to based on the, the way it's set up. So for, for Karen, for Joe and Kathy, like I said, it's, it's going to, they're going to potentially lose use of their driveway or have to share it with someone, which for something they've already paid for and they've already done. And there's the impact there. And I understand what you're saying. Well, go through the plating process and then you can protest. Well, it seems like the cart's before the horse on this one. And I appreciate your.
Yeah, I had one question that was, that may come to, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Yeah, point of privilege.
Hold on. Councilman Brantley.
I, I would like to withdraw my motion, request permission or withdraw my motion with the intent to immediately request a table.
Well, you just moved to table.
Yeah.
Well, if you want a table, you just moved to table.
You don't have to withdraw. Move to table. I, I think there's a lot of things that need to be answered and, and I, I know that at this point in time, I'm a little confused.
Debating a motion to table? Debating. You can't, but fair, I mean, is, is there a second to?
I'll second.
Okay. Yeah, there's, there's no debate on a motion to table. All those in favor say aye. What? Wait, there's a motion to table. So we have to dispense the motion to table. So.
Is there discussion on the motion to table?
There is not discussion on a motion to table. So if you want to have more discussion, you vote against the motion to table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No. Motion carries. So table.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We'll move on to item, where, where were we? That was six D.
Six E.
That was six E. No, we're on, now we're, we're on six E now.
We've already done E, so now we're going to F.
We just did E and we tabled F. No.
Hold on. We did E first. Hold on just a second. So E we did first, that's Sherwood.
Yes. Okay. Item six F. Conduct a public hearing concerning a request for a specific use permit for car, truck and RV washing facilities in a general commercial zoning district for approximately plus or minus point two six acres located at thirty-seven twelve highway three and legally described as abstract nineteen Perry and Austin, sir, part of lots one fifty-four zero dash two Dickinson addition D. We will begin this public hearing at ten oh five PM. And staff presentation.
This property is located on the west side of five seventeen. There is an existing building already there and what is being proposed is a specific use permit for car, truck and RV washing facilities, which is the use that's actually listed in the table. What they're actually proposing is a detailing service. They do a mobile detailing service now and so they're wanting to put it at this brick and mortar. The, they've got the site plan of what they're proposing and that's what staff has.
All right. Thank you. Is there an applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Evaldo Rodriguez. I'm at one three three Bright Brook Lane here in Dickinson. So, yeah, so we are a veteran owned and operated detailing business. We've been mobile for about, going on seven years now. So we are actually looking for a shop to call our home so that we can perform services in, in store and shop. So that's what we have proposed here and hopefully it goes through. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We don't have any public comments for this item. Oh, we do. We have one. Okay. I apologize.
Eddie Bandak, three eight one three Pine Manor. I'm with the landlord office. Him and his partner are both army veterans. Since they came back, they've been doing mobile car detailing. Looked at our website and I met with them. I'm honored to have a lease with them. I think they're going to do great. Right on highway three, what their image and what their plan of doing is not a rugged or some kind of a car wash. It's an actually true detailing service. They're going to offer a nice lounge. It's going to be an upscale, nice detailing service. We made sure in the lease that we will not have any cars that will be parked overnight. No mechanic work ever, just detailing and car wash. I hope you support them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no need for an applicant rebuttal. So we will adjourn the public hearing at ten oh eight PM and move on to item six G. Consideration of possible action concerning a request for a specific use permit for car, truck and RV washing facilities in a general commercial zoning district for approximately plus or minus point two six acres located at thirty-seven twelve highway three and legally described as abstract nineteen Perry and Austin, sir, part of lot one fifty-four zero dash two Dickinson addition D.
Move to approve with conditions as recommended by staff.
All right. There's a motion to approve by Councilman Brantley and there's a second by Councilman Schick. Is there any discussion? Council Townsend. Okay.
So I would like to kind of respond to that. So that use, car, truck and RV washing, that is the use in our use table that requires the specific use permit. They're not actually proposing RV washing. They're proposing a car detailing service. Not necessarily RVs, but that is the use that's listed in the table for specific use permit being required.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments on this? Hearing none. We'll take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? With Councilman Townsend voting no, the motion carries. I'll move on to item seven. Do, there was, when our executive session, it was, it was mentioned we might need to table this item. Do we need to table this item? We do not.
The only, if you move to approve this item, just strike section ten of the proposed agreement.
All right. Item seven A. Consideration and possible action to prove a proposal for special counsel legal services for Mill Shirley LLP. Is there a motion to approve potentially with that change?
Move to approve with that change.
All right. So there's motion to approve with striking line ten. Is that correct? Section ten. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brantley. Just to kind of get some context, this is really just about supplementing the kind of the day-to-day legal services that we do. In particular, as several people noted, you know, we do have a number of, of old ordinances, issues like that, things that we need to work through. And so this is to allow that to happen and we really just need additional legal services to do that next to the, the work that we're doing every day. So the, the hope is this will let us kind of get through some of the, the red tape and just kind of dead wood to send the code ordinances and get things cleaned up, updated, et cetera. So, and that's really why that's here. So is there any questions or comments on this item?
Correct. Now, like I said, they do reserve the right to request that, a retainer in the future. Of course, at that time, we may have to revisit, you know, the relationship and so forth. What we're really trying to do here is, and that's really in a situation where if we're constantly calling them and, and then, you know, they finally say, look, you know, you're kind of taking advantage of a, a lot of free services and so forth. What we're really trying to structure this around is like there may be some very specific projects, some very specific areas in coordinating with Olson and Olson say, hey, you know, there's these, these one-off projects in some certain areas. We're bowed up and Mill Shirley can come in and handle that. It'd be, it would be a task at Olson and Olson would take, but you know, for, you know, to move things a little quicker, we can move it over to Mill Shirley. That was kind of how we were envisioning being able to do that.
That's, the main project off the bat will be a code update.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah. What was the, what's the purpose for striking?
So it's, it's a boilerplate provision requiring binding arbitration on the city in case there was any disagreement with Mill Shirley. And so when you have in-house counsel, you don't want to have binding arbitration like that. We can work out a mediation or some other kind of issue.
Okay. Other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. We'll take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take us to item ten, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Councilman Simpson. There's a second by Councilman Linton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at ten thirteen P M.